Wednesday, February 26. Who is calling the roll today?
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
I'm here.
All right. Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Marhul?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier?
As not here. All right.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2020?
So much.
I will second.
Thank you. Any changes to be made?
Just page two, eight and six. It's first set of bullet points, bullet points, excuse me. Expansion of the special use for the existing elementary school, not existing.
That's a good catch. Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Five.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. I don't see our trustee liaison, Director Apt. Do you have a village board update for us?
Yes, the Blithe Park Elementary School was before the village board at their last meeting and they did approve the special use expansion. So that's the latest update we have for zoning cases.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding Ames Elementary. We do not have a quorum because Commissioner Marhul will be sitting out, refusing himself for that discussion, so we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is old business. Great for most of you here to...
And just for anyone in the public who's here on the Ames School expansion, we are going, we are expecting another commissioner at some point, so as soon as she gets here, after she gets here and we wrap up the item, we're about to commence, then we'll go back to the public hearing. All right?
So this is to, an item that was remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, PZ 1908, a zoning ordinance, text amendments concerning gravel driveways for further input on gravel driveway issues, including but not limited to allowing decorative pea gravel driveways on non-landmark homes, listing additional pervious materials for driveways and discussion of the pros and cons of crushed gravel driveways. Director Apt?
Yes. Back on December 16th, we held a public hearing on a text amendment regarding gravel driveways. After considering testimony from gravel driveway owners, the commission recommended approval of a text amendment with certain changes, which would be to allow existing gravel driveways to remain until the property is sold, to require the gravel driveway to be replaced with an approved driveway material within one year of the sale of the property, to require the existing gravel driveways be maintained to the existing maintenance standards that are in the code, and to revise the current maintenance standards to only require the edging for decorative pea gravel driveways. The village board discussed your recommendation and actually remanded this text amendment back to you to consider allowing decorative pea gravel driveways for non-landmark homes, discuss listing additional pervious pavement options to reflect the village's preference for permeable materials, to evaluate the pros and cons of allowing crushed gravel driveways, and also they directed staff to verify the number of gravel driveways to determine the actual impact of the code change. I did provide you a link to the village board's discussion, so I hope that was somewhat helpful as you kind of went through the staff report here. As far as the number of gravel driveways, we did survey the entire community and we did find a few additionally affected properties. These were primarily parking pads or garage aprons that are located adjacent to alleys in the village. There's a gravel area between two adjacent driveways that was also found during the survey, so there's a total of 35 gravel driveways slash parking pads, and previously we had identified 29. So that's an additional six properties that are affected, based on our, from our previous list. So we tried to put down some pros and cons related to gravel driveways as the village board directed. We wanted to kind of take a look for your consideration because they were interested in you having a discussion to kind of talk about if there is a need to replace gravel driveways or if they could simply be grandfathered in. So what is really the public interest in making sure that they are removed? So some of the things that we looked at for pros for gravel driveways is that they are a less expensive option. As far as gravel goes, pea gravel is actually considered to be a permeable material if it's properly excavated and installed. Proper installation will minimize the spread of gravel beyond driveways. Public Works has stated that they don't, haven't actually had any issues with any of the existing gravel driveways as far as issues with gravel getting into the street during plowing or into the storm, stormwater system on a regular basis. They think that a lot of that has to do that we don't allow gravel aprons, so they would not be interested in allowing gravel driveway aprons in the parkway. So, but if it's on private property, they haven't really had any issues with that. Also, if properly maintained, gravel can have a greater longevity than concrete or asphalt materials. As far as cons go, they do require more regular maintenance than a traditional paved driveway. Typically, you're looking at every one year to five years having to do some sort of either regrade, add an additional gravel to it, et cetera. Over time, you're looking at developing weeds, potholes, ruts, and depressions that will require weeding and redressing. Crushed gravel driveways are considered impervious under MWRD's watershed management ordinance. Runoff from crushed gravel driveways is similar to a traditional paved surface, maybe a slight reduction, but not enough that MWRD considers it to be a permeable material. If existing driveway is not properly removed and gravel is merely overlaid, then regardless of the gravel type, it will be considered impervious. Gravel can cause dust without proper maintenance and under certain conditions, but this effect can be reduced with certain chemical applications, and another one is that snow removal is more difficult with a gravel driveway. It should be noted that the village does have a few public gravel alleys. Additionally, the access to Scout Cabin and Indian Gardens are gravel access drives. Pea gravel driveways were discussed by the village board. Some trustees had some questions about whether they would be considered permeable, so we did reach out to our village engineer to talk about that. And so pea gravel driveway, provided it has the proper sub base before it, is considered a permeable, would be considered a permeable surface. So that was one of the reasons that since it is permeable, that the village board wanted the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider allowing it for non-landmark homes as well, considering its permeability as an option. So it should be noted then, again, though, simply top dressing over an existing crushed gravel driveway with pea gravel is not going to make it permeable. It does have to be completely excavated and a proper sub base put down underneath it in order for it to be considered permeable. There was also a question about whether there are other types of decorative gravel that could be considered permeable, and in doing some review, it appears that there are a few other options, such as maybe marble chips or one thing I found called a Jersey Shore gravel. I don't know how readily available around here that would be. River stone was not recommended for driveways or walkways. Just too large of a stone that it's not really considered a proper material for driving over or for having as a walkway. It's something that should be more used in a landscape bed, things like that. So that was not recommended. The key with these materials, again, is that they have smooth edges so that they don't interlock, and they're not mixed with stone dust fines, so that helps prevent the compaction which will fill the voids and then prevent the infiltration of water. Also, as part of our research, there's no specific standards for gravel driveways in our building codes. Therefore, if gravel driveways were to be allowed, a building code amendment would be, would need to be added. The village engineer recommended that we could create a standard. Some maintenance guidelines state that gravel, pea gravel driveways do easily move around and rut, so they do not recommend more than three inches of pea gravel on top to add to the stability of the driveway. It's also noted that gravel driveways are not appropriate for driveways with steeper slopes. As I noted before, Public Works does not object to allowing gravel driveways on private property. Again, they do not support allowing gravel for a parkway or driveway aprons. Another point of discussion was other permeable pavement options. Again, this was not something really specifically discussed during the public hearing, which is why the village board remanded it back for you guys to have some further discussion. But there was some talk about if we are going to allow pea gravel driveways and we want to promote permeable pavement, could we perhaps consider updating the driveway materials list to better highlight permeable pavement options, such as permeable concrete or asphalt? In doing some review, looking at other permeable options, you have obviously permeable pavers, pea gravel as we've discussed, but there's also permeable concrete, porous asphalt, grass crete, or other similar void structures. We did provide you with a copy of some, an information sheet. Burlington, Vermont actually had a program about promoting stormwater-friendly driveways, so we included that in your packet as kind of a reference for some good information about different options for providing more stormwater-friendly driveways. We also did a survey of comparable communities and what their permitted pavement types are. For the most part, they are not calling out specific different types of permeable pavement, and most do not allow gravel as a pavement option. So we are looking for you to provide the village board with a determination on whether decorative pea gravel driveway should be permitted for landmark properties. Currently, they're only allowed, on non-landmark properties, currently they're only allowed for our historic landmark properties. Whether additional pervious pavement options should be added to the list of permitted driveway materials to evaluate the pros and cons of allowing crushed gravel driveways and whether they should be required to be replaced at the time a property is sold or if they should simply be grandfathered in. And do the six additional identified gravel driveways impact how the issue of nonconformity should be viewed and any hardship imposed upon the affected properties?
So, that is the background. Initial thoughts?
Since the village has just spent a significant, although of other people's resources, money on the parking lot at, the parking lot at the commuter lot, it would seem appropriate to permit permeable materials elsewhere. The pea gravels, pea gravel for other properties, I don't see where, I, it seems, it would appear to me to be acceptable as Public Works has noted that they don't have issues with it. Pea gravel isn't going to create any more dust than anything else. All driveways require maintenance. Some people do it, some people don't. It ends up being an enforcement issue more than anything else. In general, I would support the new types, and it's a secondary question whether or not we want to allow the existing gravel driveways to remain. Again, if Public Works doesn't have a problem with it, we've got that competing with a previous decision by zoning in the village that gravel driveways weren't supposed to be allowed. We can, we're revisiting that now. Good to hear other people's comments.
And I think the important thing is just following exactly how they have it set aside here, that you have to dig down, you have to remove the old material, you have to put in the geotextile fabric as a base layer, so basically putting a Band-Aid on the problem isn't going to fix it. It's the six-inch base with the two to three inches of pea gravel on the top. I, if this is the sort of thing somebody wants on their own property within the sidewalk, I, I think it's an environmentally friendly material. It's, it's going to be difficult in this climate to maintain. Snow removal is very tough for it. It's something you're constantly going to be fighting, but if that's what you want to do with the steel edge banding, I, I can't stand in the way of it.
I agree with those comments on both sides. I support having what we might call a porous gravel driveway, whether it's with pea gravel or from my research, similar to grasscrete, there are plastic grids that can be put down and you can put gravel of the right size within those plastic grids, just like the grasscrete, and it's porous. You have to have a geotextile membrane below, so I would support having standards in the code or the building code that allow for pea gravel driveways with appropriate edging, porous gravel driveways. And then I would support changing the code where it references asphalt and porous, pervious asphalt, concrete porous, pervious concrete. And then I like the idea also of at least acknowledging that there could be these ribbon driveways that would be made from, where the tire tread area would be made from one of the approved, one of the approved materials that's already under the code, concrete, asphalt, pavers, or porous asphalt, porous concrete, or gravel or grasscrete, but with the ribbons. So I support all of that, but I do think that we will need to have something in either, I don't know what's appropriate, the zoning code or the building code that has specific standards for how you build these things. And then I would support for the existing gravel driveways that are not porous, that what was done before by, what was recommended before by the PZC be continued with, with the sunsetting of those with one, having to be replaced one year after the sale of the property.
Within one year?
Yeah, within whatever was specific, I support all that. There was one other comment, I wanted to make two, oh, two other comments actually. One was, it seems to me like maintenance of driveways should not fall under the zoning code as a subject of penalty, or should be similar to property maintenance. And I assume that property maintenance activities like gutters, painting, weeds in the yard, I assume that's all under the building code.
It is.
So I would be in support then of driveways being the same, maintaining a driveway is the same as maintaining, you know, peeling paint on your house or your windows or whatever. And then the other comment I wanted to make is that I think under the municipal code eight dash three dash six refers to paved, private driveways and things like that, so we might need to look at eight dash three, I think it's dash one, dash one, dash four, maybe dash six that will need to be taken a look at, because that kind of refers to driveway materials.
So on your, on the pros and cons table, one of the missing pros is that gravel driveways don't include petroleum project products. So I think that's a very significant pro that we'd want to add to that. Trustee Pollock had asked for pros and cons of crushed gravel driveways in particular, so how would you tweak this table to meet that?
I would say any talk about permeability kind of goes out with that. I mean, similar for a gravel driveway, if you want to minimize maintenance issues, if you want it to last longer, it's the installation that it's important. So it's making sure you're getting that six inches of a proper sub base underneath it, whether it's permeable or not, having that proper base underneath it and then having the two to three inches of the crushed gravel with the dust fines in it so that it's going to lock together and then provide a good base. But again, it is going to require that regular maintenance and regular application of, you know, like a top dressing, regrading from, not regrading, but sort of a reraking to redistribute things. And it's also, it's gonna, it is going to have dust and things are going to kind of move around, so there are possibly other applications that have to be made to it, chemical applications or whatever, to try to keep those, those things down when it's kind of in that in-between maintenance period or right at the beginning of that maintenance period. Because when you have the fresh gravel down, that's when you're more likely to get a lot of the dust kick up as things are starting to settle and re-interlock with each other. So I think gravel driveways are for a certain person, for a certain type that's willing to, to put the effort into it. It is going to be, it's not a just done, you get it paved and you're done with it for five years or 10 years or, you know, whatever the case may be. It is something you're going to have to address on a regular basis, so it's going to have to be somebody that's willing to put, put that investment into it. It's just the other cons to it are just going to be that, from a village standpoint, that is going to be requiring more regular monitoring of those areas to make sure that things are going to be addressed, but that's, that's more on the staff side than necessarily anything else.
So on page three, the list of permeable options, some of us were wondering how the village would count permeability. So if you're calculating on somebody's land, how much of the land is impervious?
Mm-hmm.
So obviously, a concrete driveway would be 100% impervious. A paver driveway, how would you count that? How would you count pea gravel if it's properly installed, if porous asphalt? So just in general, could you talk to us about how those would be calculated?
Right, in general, there's not a hard standard that's out there. So our village engineer has basically said if they are going to give you a, give you a rate of permeability, you can use that. Otherwise, MWRD says that these types of materials are not considered impervious surfaces. So they don't give you a specific number in that definition when talking about the different materials. So there's other areas of the MWRD code I think you have to look at to get to that, but generally, we have said if something is a permeable, considered permeable, then we don't count it towards your impervious surface. So if somebody does a permeable gravel driveway, that gravel driveway up to wherever they put their, you know, kind of concrete apron before it goes into the garage, is considered a permeable surface and doesn't count towards their overall impervious surface coverage.
Okay, thanks. Did you, any of you have a chance to look at the marble chips or the Jersey Shore?
Jersey Shore rocks?
No.
The Jersey Shore ones were quite nice. I know we don't do design, but the marble chips were all glaringly, glaring white, which we don't...
Maybe we want to specify. I mean, I know we don't do aesthetics, but maybe natural stone, not including translucent or shiny stone.
I, I understand your point, but I don't want to go into, I don't want to get into your aesthetics.
Okay.
And my guess is that crushed marble is probably fairly expensive.
Probably. Although they have those white chips at the hardware store, you know, I don't know what those actually are. That's probably not marble.
Not as cheap as you think.
It's definitely white, some other type of granite.
It looks like Jersey Shore chips come in three eighth to three quarter size, roughly the same as pea gravel, same characteristics, rounded, so that, that should be a similar use there.
Sonia, is this, is the replacement of the gravel driveway, will that be, or is it already in the compliance checklist for when there's a house sale?
From, it's currently, we note if it is a gravel driveway, and then we put on the compliance that it is required to be replaced. And we typically put a one-year mark on that, which is why the commission made that recommendation at the public hearing.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this? All right. Not a public hearing, so if you go up to the podium, please. You know the routine. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Holochek. I'm a Riverside resident. I live on these plains. I've been designated as a non-compliant resident. My first question to the committee is, will the village be held to the same standard as the residents?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Is the village ready to shovel out tens of thousands of dollars for itself to become compliant? Because it currently is out of compliance. Ms. Apt already mentioned Indian Gardens and Scout Cabin. These are not driveways. These are long stretches of gravel, over 50 yards by my rough estimate. That's a lot of dust, that's a lot of underlayment work that has to be done, and to me, in simple terms, translates to a large cost for the village. I do not want to tag the village with a unspeakable additional unbudgeted cost, which this is kind of looking like it may become if the village also has to be compliant. The other thing I would like to say is, residents are being held accountable and our properties would be tagged at the point of sale if we're out of compliance. How do we tag the village if they're out of compliance? Thank you.
Well, I should correct. I don't want to speak for the board. I don't know if the staff has talked about going forward with the driveways because no final decision has been made yet. Anybody else? No, we've got somebody coming up. You can go next.
That's what I was trying to do. My name is Georgia Albertson. Lived in Riverside over 50 years, bought it with a gravel driveway, have maintained it with a gravel driveway. The scary part now is you're saying, okay, you can keep your driveway, but whoever buys your house, this is what you want to, you know, want to do, they have to fix it. That's taking money right out of my pocket. It really is. It's going to reduce the cost of the money I can sell that house for because now they're going to be obligated to do it. And I know a fair portion of the people that have gravel driveways are senior citizens. I don't see the necessity to have, everybody's going to have pea gravel, marble, whatever. It's ridiculous. It just really is, and it's too expensive. You can't inflict this on people to conform. Conform to what? Riverside is a non-conforming community. Cristaco, brick, it were different. Blue houses, red houses. What is the difference? I just don't understand this, where now we have to, everybody has to have a certain kind, it's just, it's beyond me, frankly.
Vlad Kohanik, 99 Groveland. First of all, I would suspect that we may be in, in compliance. Is that so? Is there a list of properties, public, that lists these properties that are in compliance?
Yes, it's publicly available on the website.
Okay, so the 99 Groveland, if you could look that up.
Sonia, can you grab that? Yes, that's on the list of not performing.
Okay. I've lived there since 1979. There's been this parking area which serves the apart, large apartment complexes on the other side of the alley. They are begging for parking spaces. There is no way that I'm going to spend thousands of dollars to get rental spaces for people that have two cars and rent these condos or apartments. So that would be taken off, so now the congestion that you have in this location is going to be greatly exaggerated. The property on Lincoln, maybe 20 years ago, double the size of their existing parking area, which now impinges into the alley. And when I have seen cars in the alley that aren't fully on the property of the apartment buildings, the police just shake their heads, shrug their shoulders, and say there's nothing that's going to be done. Who is going to determine, one, if it's in compliance, one, another, if the proper base or the size or the level or the grade or the existing is going to be scientifically investigated? I guess you're drilling holes through the gravel to see what happens. Lastly, we are in a flood area. So on my first year wedding anniversary, instead of going down to the Conrad Hilton where we had rooms, I'm in a canoe that I just bought going in and out of where I live. This parking area was in existence that... This parking area was in existence back in 2009, 2008. There's another flood that comes over the bank. In 2013, there's another flood that comes over the bank. I don't know, out of all the homes in Riverside, I'm sure you have a number of homes, why you're picking on, what, 35 properties to maybe improve gravel parking area, which most of these homeowners are elderly. They can't afford it. They can't do it. They're losing their life's investment in their home to do a compliance. They're going to just take out their driveway and maybe just have one little space. They won't even be able to maybe get to their garage. They're not going to put in $20,000 to put in a cement driveway to go to the back of their home in order to have a driveway. I believe that it's a nice idea. Homes that may have a very visible notice in the community that could maybe be improved that way. There can be some type of negotiation one-on-one with those people instead of getting a letter in the mail saying, there's going to be a meeting and you're apparently affected since I got it through the mail. Two days ago, canceled patience to be here this evening and dealing with this. I believe a better way of spending our time is to see why some 35 years ago, when we got flooded the first time, or 32 years ago, the problem still hasn't been addressed or has definitely not been solved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hannock. Anybody else? Okay. So let's turn to page four, under the recommendation that staff is looking for. Recommendations. So at the top of the page, should decorative pea gravel driveways be permitted for non-landmark properties? I think we're in consensus that we would make that recommendation. Should additional pervious pavement options be added to the list of permitted driveway materials to reflect the village's preference for permeable materials? Yes?
Yes. Any of the ones that were mentioned.
Yes, they all seem appropriate.
All right, now the more challenging one. The pros and cons of allowing crushed gravel driveways and whether they should be required to be replaced, amortized at the time a property is sold or simply grandfathered. I heard Commissioner Miller saying that you were comfortable with our prior recommendation of within a year of sale.
I'm also comfortable with that.
I wasn't at that meeting and I am comfortable with that. But on the other hand, I would obviously defer to the village board if given concerns of certain citizens, if they wanted to do something different.
I could be convinced to allow them to remain if they were brought up to proper standards. Meaning, it could be grandfathered in if the new owner puts in the edging and maintains it properly. But right now, it's a little too loosey-goosey. That's a professional term.
I didn't get the sense, sorry, that the village board was thinking of grandfathering? Did you, Attorney Morris?
So, you know, these various questions were kind of raised, in some cases individually, by trustees and we just had a sense that this was the collective group of questions to bring back. I don't think they took a straw poll or had that much discussion about this specific one.
I agree with what Commissioner Marhol said about maintenance. That's important under the building codes, just like any other part of someone's house. And if the concern that this board or a prior board had was, number one, that crushed gravel really is impervious, it's not pervious. Number two, there's a dust issue. And number three, there's an appearance issue with weeds or things like that. Well, the weeds can be addressed by maintenance. The dust issue doesn't seem to be a problem according to our village Public Works Department, as Ms. Apt said. And then the third one is, the gravel driveway is no more, no more impervious than a concrete or asphalt driveway. So it's no worse than those materials. So I think those considerations should be taken into account.
Is there any interest in reconsidering setting a clock? Needs to be done within three years or within a year of sale, whichever is faster?
That's what I was thinking of, actually. Is that if, no matter what the... I think at a minimum, there's, there needs to be, at a minimum, there needs to be some maintenance standards enforced.
I think we're probably all in agreement on that.
Yes. I think we came to a unanimous agreement in December that it was going to be a year after the point of sale. I don't see a reason to change what we all agreed to when we met as a larger body.
Well, I was going to allowing, potentially allowing them to remain if they were brought up to minimum standards. So that is a change from December. But I'm not sure how to, and I think Commissioner Chairperson Taylor mentioned some timeline on that.
But if crushed gravel is not a permitted material, then they can't be maintained with crushed gravel.
Well, and that's where it gets grandfathered in. There are maintenance standards in the previous zoning code.
There are.
There were?
There were.
Thought I remembered that.
Well, we could, it could be allowed to maintain the ones that exist as long as the property owner wishes while not allowing new crushed gravel driveways. That is an option. There obviously are just a handful. I don't know how many residential ones. There are less than 26, I assume.
Thirty-six, thirty...
That's all of them. Right, that's all of them. I don't know how many of those are residential. And some of them, I think, are just small pads. They're not driveways. They're just small pads, which could or could not be used for parking and could simply be counted against the, with, I always have trouble saying this, within the impervious pervious percentage of a lot.
So Commissioner Mayor inclined to stick with our decision, our recommendation in December?
I am.
As am I. I'm not sure what your current recommendations are.
Grandfathering with, with certain restrictions. Maintenance, maintenance with the border.
So what I have here that was in the agenda packet for replacement, 10-10-7, just says that must after January 2020 be replaced within one year of the sale and not, there was no additional three-year replacement.
I think that...
I was just picking that out of the air.
Oh, okay. I thought that was part of it, okay. Are we, like, voting on whether we want to amend what was sent to the board earlier? Or is this just a matter of discussion for the board?
I think it's just a matter of discussion for now. To be honest, it's not clear to me. Doesn't give us the... So are you recommending grandfather as well or the December decision?
You know, I think on balance, I would be more likely to go grandfathering because I don't see the equitable reasons for forcing the replacement if the existing property owner or a future property owner doesn't choose to keep the gravel driveway as long as they're maintained. And I realize that maintenance is a hard thing to judge. But again, I don't think that's new with lots of other parts of maintaining a house and how the village enforces that. Unless, of course, we have complaints of a particular driveway. And as far as we've heard here, we, there are no complaints by neighbors or any other residents.
So I think that makes the last point a little irrelevant. Do the six additionally, additional identified driveways impact how the issue of non-conformity should be viewed?
I would like to stick my neck out and say that I don't think that has any bearing on this discussion.
Okay. It was not discussed by the board, but I only thought of this while we were sitting here. Because pervious surface is important to many of us on the commission, if not all of us. Do we want to make a side recommendation to the board that they consider incentives? We've discussed that before in terms of front lawn and garages and whatnot. And we haven't pursued that further beyond discussion and I don't...
I think the incentive may be there in the sense of, and criticize this as you need to, when you have a pervious driveway, then that reduces the total impervious on your lot. So you're, you are gaining a benefit. You can put other impervious, which means essentially house or roof. So there is a benefit just by doing it. I don't think we need to provide additional.
That's a good point.
I think...
And that's mentioned in the documentation from Burlington to Vermont. It's not my creativity.
And if someone comes in to put an addition on their home or do something that increases the impervious surface any further and they would need a variation for that, this, or this commission would have the authority at that point to say, well, no, you've got to reduce your impervious surface somewhere else in the lot, I think.
And then finally, we're recommending tight standards for these various materials that are being added. That we've discussed, certain depth that they have to excavate down to the soil, the layer, the plastic layer. Snow removal issues haven't talked about. I know there's one driveway in town where it's a new owner and now they're being suggested that they, their snow plow, plow into the driveway rather than out of the driveway so the gravel stays on the property.
That's actually a rule that's supposed to apply to all properties in the village, that the snow plows are not supposed to plow.
How long have you lived here?
I understand that and it's a pet peeve and I, it should apply to everyone equally. It's pretty much irrelevant whether you're doing it on a gravel or normal driveway.
Can you think of other standards that we should suggest staff to look at?
I suppose some kind of effort to keep the gravel off of the public sidewalk for a slip hazard or something like that. I don't know how that gets implemented.
I, a lot of this goes back to general maintenance issues and enforcement.
Okay. Other thoughts? Yes, sir?
Again, Vlad Kohanik, 99 Groveland. You know, I think this problem is going to solve itself because when new owners take over these properties, they're going to want to do improvements to make it comfortable for them, not the previous owner. And as a result, they're going to say, honey, I don't want to be walking on a gravel something or other. I want something that we just had a new baby and this is going to be something that we can drive on safely. It's going to all take care of itself over a matter of time. I don't think you should push this on the few residents that it really affects because probably, given 10 years, maybe at the most, this is all going to be kind of irrelevant. Time marches on. Properties are going to be improved. Riverside's a beautiful community. People want to move here. They want their home to be perfect. Our existing neighbors, the Karloskis at 95, who was there ever since we've had this property, are all deceased. The mother, the two daughters. A new couple comes in, they're doing all the improvements. They want it perfect. They're going to get married. They're going to have a child. It's going to be spotless. That's where the improvement comes in. Let just nature take care of itself. You can guide these people as they do by the property saying, you know, it's of the opinion of Riverside that we would like this gravel driveway possibly to be eliminated. And they're going to actually be able to handle it. Don't force it on people that have lived in these homes for 20, 30, 40, 50 years. Thank you.
All right, so are we having a public hearing?
Do you have what you need here?
Okay. All right. So it's a little bit anticlimactic, but we have, as you can see, only four commissioners here. One is also a school board member, so he needs to recuse himself when we talk about the school, school issue. We had one commissioner who we knew would not be able to make it tonight. Another has come down ill, so she can't make it. And the third is weather delayed and she is not going to make it either. So that means we don't have a quorum to go forward with the public hearing. In talking to the school district representatives outside, we were proposing, and we wanted to check with the members of the commission, possible special meeting on the 11th, which would enable them to get a recom, enable you to get a recommendation to the board for their March 19th meeting. So if everyone could check their schedules for March 11th.
It's fine with me.
I don't think I matter. It's true.
You do matter.
You're good? Okay.
So assumedly, we would be able to get one of the missing members to attend that night. So I think what we should do is take a roll call, open the public hearing, and then a motion to continue it to March 11th at a special meeting and go from there.
Okay. So I'll open public hearing, PZ 19-07, concerning 86 Southcoat, 92 Repton, 443 Loudon, to consider an application to expand an existing special use and for several variations from the bulk permitted encroachment, parking and landscape requirements to allow a two-story classroom addition to an existing elementary school and associated parking lot and playground improvements in the R1A single-family zoning district. The petitioner is Riverside School District, D96. All members are still present. Commissioner Marhol will puce himself because he is a school board member. All in favor?
Aye.
There being only three members present for the public hearing. We don't have a quorum, so if we could have a motion to continue the public hearing to March 11th.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing until March 11th at a special meeting.
And I will second.
And this is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
We'll continue the public hearing on that date. Sorry for anyone who came out tonight. We appreciate it and hope you're able to return and make your comments at that time.
And Attorney Morris, you said that, the school district said that would, that will give them sufficient time to notice, you have to notice it for the village board meeting? Is that right?
Right. The intent would be for, if there's a recommendation from this body on March 11th, to hear it at the March 19th village board meeting. Because the district is obviously anxious to move forward.
Right, they're a little time crunch, so, okay. All right.
So we still, folks, we still have our meeting? Folks, we still have our meeting, so you're very well... Folks, we still have our meeting, so you're very welcome to leave. Going to talk about planned unit developments, but if you are going to leave, if you can... Please, thanks for coming tonight.
Is there anything further we're going to do on driveways, or...
Well, actually, what is next? It wasn't clear to us on the gravel driveways. So you have our recommendations, so we will take your recommendations to the village board, and then they can consider those and decide how or if they want to incorporate those recommendations into the text amendment at their...
Right, so the board has your findings of fact from the last time. Prepare supplemental recommendations based on tonight's direction, provide those to them, and they will finalize their text amendments at that point.
Okay, thanks.
Representatives of the school district, we did continue the meeting to March 11th. Okay? The public hearing, thank you.
And we should know within a day or two whether we will have a quorum barring any health issues. So let's drink a lot of orange juice, everybody.
And I know you gentlemen were out of the room, but the, the three members are all able to make it on the 11th. So we just need one more. Thank you.
Joel, can you close the door as much as it can be, please? Okay, all business be, continued discussion of planned unit developments and recommendations to staff and the village board.
So at your last meeting, we went over a draft ordinance that Attorney Mars had put together regarding planned unit developments. So you guys had some comments regarding it, and we'd also sent you a link with some of the other PUD ordinance examples in the previous packet and again in this packet, so you can kind of see what, like Claritin Hills, Hinsdale, River Forest, and some other communities have in their PUD ordinances. So we provided you with a link to that again for this one. So your comments have been incorporated into the draft ordinance from the last meeting. And then we are just kind of looking for a recommendation from you to the village board on whether to move forward with the PUD ordinance. And if you're happy with the framework that Attorney Mars has put together, we can present that to the village board and see if they want to move forward with a public hearing on a text amendment to allow PUDs. So with that, we can kind of open it up for your feedback. And if Attorney, if you want to, Attorney Mars can kind of go through some of the changes that were made based on your feedback. So what are your thoughts? It's one way to clear a room. And I'm sorry, for some reason, when I converted to the PUD and brought in that little comments section, so I'm sorry the font's so small, but I couldn't get it to knock you down when I was converting it, so...
Sonya, I'll just, this isn't quite PZC, but when you have the track changes, sometimes that confuses the computer and wants to bring in that comments column.
It does. An easy one, table of contents is off.
What?
Yeah, it was last time, too. I didn't notice it until this time. So it changes at, procedure, 1013-7, I think.
Right, the approval standards are not included in the... Okay.
Yep.
I don't really have any comments. I mean, it all looks good to me based on what was done before and your change, your additional changes. The only thing I had a question about is in the change top of page eight. It'd be easier to refer to it that way. If the application is not acted upon by the village board within 60 days, it shall be deemed to have been denied. Is that standard? Is that like a standard provision to have in these kinds of either PUD provisions or zoning provisions or site development provisions?
Yeah, that is pretty common, just to have some kind of end date so that things aren't indefinitely delayed and...
What if the village board is just, it's summer, they can't have, they can't get a quorum or whatever? Is that's not an issue, you don't think it'll be an issue ever?
Well, I, I mean, if there's, if there's good reason, I think you can always implicitly extend it by mutual agreement of the parties.
Okay.
It's more just to prevent a one-sided, you know, we have all the powers, we're just going to ignore it or whatever, and you'll never have a decision, that type of thing.
Oh, I see, so it gives them a right, a legal right then?
It gives them a right, yeah.
Okay, I understand.
Attorney Mars, there are a couple of things that are going on in the larger world around us, and that, one of them is accessory dwelling units, which is basically taking a garage or having a small building in the backyard for another residential unit. And I'm one, I don't have a good answer for this, but it seems that we want to be careful about 1013-3, the authorization and applicability. Is there a way to keep ADUs from generating PUD criteria? There's probably a better way of phrasing that. And I say this because I saw something recently, as in yesterday, about a vote in the state of Illinois legislature about accessory dwelling units and changes to zoning, that that is something that's coming up. I don't have additional details because I didn't dwell into it very well. I know it was in the Greens as a headline item.
Yeah, city of Chicago is cracking down on coach houses is the big thing.
Well, thank you. I, I'm, I have half my story.
Well, the village already has restrictions on use of coach houses. Sonya, I don't know if you want to summarize.
I'm more concerned that adding, if someone has a, wants to add...
An accessory dwelling unit that they would...
That then they could fall under the PUD application criteria. That's where I'm going.
I think in the preliminary plan, it would come out and be clearly against our zoning purpose and intent and would fail there, right?
That's fine.
But, but I understand what you're suggesting is that the phrase involving only a single-family home could be utilized by somebody.
That's what I'm getting at, is to prevent...
And that if we are, maybe try to clarify that, we could prevent even an application, right?
That's more, that's, thank you. You're clarifying this better than I described it.
Okay, I, I can address that language and try to deal with that concern.
I had no other comments.
Are the standards in 1013-7 based on case law like they are for variations? Or are they more like special use standards?
Yeah, they're more, you know, they're, they're not specified in statute. And I'm not aware of a body of case law on planned unit development standards.
Not yet.
So it's more, yes, it's more just looking at the different sets of standards that people have utilized. So if you like, dislike, have proposed additions, et cetera, certainly when looking at different planned unit development ordinances, that some had a lot of standards, some had very few. You know, you have to meet the special use standards in addition, so these are kind of supplementary. So it, it, at hearings I've been at where there are a lot of additional planned unit developments, and all of a sudden you're going through 19 standards or whatever, it can get a little cumbersome, but that's not the end of the world.
Well, as I was concerned last time, you know, how do we make sure that there is a public benefit? But that's in here, so C takes care of it, it's in the chapter. Same thing with the landmark protection, you added that specifically, and it's a standalone bullet. So since it's in there, I don't think we need to have an additional F designation. So that's all I have. Commissioner May, any thoughts? So are we comfortable having this go to the village board for their yea or nay?
I am.
Yes.
I, I think it, seeing some of the other applications that have come before us, I think it would help some of the discussions to be able to have a conversation about larger benefits of something that deviates from multiple standards or requires multiple variations or something different. I think this lets us have more global perspective on it. Really, it'll only be tested when we see the first one.
Motion to approve and pass on to the village board?
Second.
Well, I don't think we need a motion, but it works.
Well, at least we know we have consensus.
Yes.
So we've got consensus to recommend to the village board allowing PUDs, and you also recommend moving forward with the draft ordinance as presented by Attorney Mars?
Yep.
Yes.
So we can take that.
Thank you. And so assumedly, if the board decides that they are comfortable with the PUD language and the concept in general, they'll send it back here for a full public hearing?
For a full public hearing, so. That wouldn't happen for March, but it might be able to happen for April. Because this would go to, well, I guess now that I don't have to put something together for the school district, I could have it on the next village board agenda. But the deadline for March is already passed, so we'd be looking at probably an April public hearing then on it, if that makes sense.
So our next scheduled meeting is March 25th? Are we definitely having something on it?
So far, we are not.
Okay.
I didn't get anything in, the deadline was Monday, because we have to have everything to the paper by Friday, so...
All right, no new business? Any other information?
No.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you, everyone.